Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 19th, 2019 meeting of the Titusville City Council at 6:30. I will call this meeting to order. And we have a quorum. So at this point, we'll have a moment of silence, as is our practice now. Please join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of several minutes. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Move for approval, sir.
Second.
Somebody want to...
Move to approve the minutes of the four regular city council meetings, including March 26th at 5:30, March 26th at 6:30, May 28th at 5:30, and June 11th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments, changes? I hear none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. We have no special recognitions or presentations. Boards and commissions, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 6A, the Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority. Mr. Derek Klein has submitted an application and has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this authority. His application is part of your packet. Additionally, you have a hard copy. Mr. Roger Molitor applied for the same position on July 5th. That was one day short of you being able to hear him, to accept his application. So procedurally, if you would like to accept his application, we'll have to table this item and allow that five-day period to go into effect for Mr. Molitor.
Vice Chair.
My first inclination would be to accept it because from what I know of Mr. Molitor, he would be solid. And we do speak often of the difficulty sometimes when we simply appoint somebody because they're the only applicant. Obviously, we would like for all applications to be on time. I get that. I don't understand the issue there. But I would say that I would like us to have the option of two. So I guess that would be the first thing we decide.
Okay. Member Nelson?
We've spoken to both applicants, and I would like to hear from them. If they have a preference on how we proceed, or if both of them are still interested in the position. I think both are great applicants, potential applicants. I think they're both great potential applicants. I don't know if they still both want to be considered or not. So that would be my question.
I'm Roger Molitor, 5417 River Edge Drive.
Yeah, I like.
First one.
This one here?
Yeah, you'll be in trouble otherwise.
I'm Roger Molitor, 5417 River Edge Drive. I've been a pilot since 1972. I've owned an airplane every day of my life since June 3rd of 1972. I've been based here since 1983 at this airport. I've been based at an airport, at two or three airports in Iowa, and a couple in North Carolina as well. So I think I have a lot of experience. I guess I'd like to see you consider both of us, and take the time to think about both of us, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay.
Sir, would you like to?
Derek Klein, 3551 Nearfield Drive. Yeah, so I just recently relocated here from Ohio. I'm a sales manager at Seema's Energy over in Orlando. And I had a few individuals that I've met with my time here that are as concerned as Roger is with the welfare of, you know, the Space Coast Airport Authority. I felt honored that they came to me and said, you know, "We believe that you are in a position professionally where you could make a difference, where you could go in and possibly, you know, bring some new ideas, some oversight." I think for myself, as a resident of Titusville, I would have an obligation, if I am part of the board, to come back to you as the council, advise you of, you know, things that are going on, as long as, and also as our fellow citizens of Titusville. Because there are, you know, they have a vested interest in this area, and the space, you know, Space Coast. And it's, I think, the opportunity that's out there, not just at Space Coast, but at Arthur Dunn and at Merritt Island, I would hesitate seeing what I've, or knowing what I know, to take investors out there at this point, just in the shape that it's in. And hearing what other folks have told me. I read the report that Mr. Milo Zonka submitted. So I think it's, for me, it's, you know, as a citizen of the community, it's one of those things that should be viewed as important as a revenue stream for this area. It can draw a lot of people. The ability of the size of the jets that can fly into Space Coast, it's not being utilized the way it should. And I think we all understand that. And some changes, you know, need to be made, whatever changes those are, however they come about. But again, I agree with Roger. I think, take the time to consider both of us. And, you know, we'll do what we need to do. And like I said, have the obligation to report back to you folks on the health of the airport and the authority. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Then in that case, my suggestion would be to postpone it. Table it for two weeks.
That's a motion?
That is, but I think, remember Jordan has his light on.
I was just gonna wait.
You were gonna wait.
I'm waiting on the mirror, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You go right in.
All right. I do know there are some challenges out at the airport right now. We definitely need to take our time and make sure we're making the right decision about this, because it could affect what's going to happen at the airport. So I appreciate both applicants willing to wait and giving us the right amount of time so we can study this and make sure we make the right decision on who should be representing the city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we have a motion from Member Nelson. I have a second. Any further discussion? I hear none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Gentlemen, we'll see you at the next meeting. And do you already have your application, correct? Yes, okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for both applying. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Item 6B is accept the planning and zoning commission semi-annual report as written.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item?
Item 6C, historic board semi-annual report. Accept the Historic Preservation Board semi-annual report as presented.
Move for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second. And I just want to add a comment that the historic board did a walking tour pamphlet for the old historic homes, and they did absolutely beautiful job. So, but second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. Item 6D, Historic Preservation Board. Currently, there is one vacancy for regular member with an unexpired term to expire on October 31st, 2020. There are also two alternate member vacancies for terms that will expire on October 31st, 2019, and October 31st, 2020. There's currently one application on file for consideration. Mr. James Green has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member.
Is Mr. Green here today? Would you like to come up and say a few words, sir?
Is it on?
Yeah.
All right. James Green, 1470 Thornton Ave. I don't have, you know, anything planned to speak about. Just wanted to offer the gratitude for the consideration for the, to be appointed to this board. And that I look forward to, if approved, I look forward to getting involved in the, more involved in the community and being a part of it.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, one second. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Green?
Actually, I do.
I do.
Okay, you're first.
Mr. Green, how long have you lived here?
Mike Green.
Oh, how long have you lived here?
I moved here in March of last year, so about a year and a few months.
And how'd you become interested in Historic Board?
I've always had an interest in history, especially local history. I'm originally from Kentucky. But anywhere that I've ever been, I've always taken a keen interest in the history, you know, local history, state history, and tried to take it in, because it's important to the culture of the town and of where you're at.
I appreciate it. We do have a town that was at one point pretty wild. So, it was.
I guess it depends on what you mean.
Wow, there.
Moonshine?
Oh, okay. That's before I got here.
That was before you got here. But yes, there was a lot of moonshine, and there were a lot of gangsters here.
And how do you know about?
Never mind.
I'm not that old, no. Well, I'm not that old.
Okay, let's get back. Member Jordan, quickly, please.
Yeah, for sure. You work at Lockheed Martin?
Yes.
Is that here, or where is it?
I work in the Orlando location.
Okay, at Eastside?
Sandlight.
Sandlight, okay. That's where my daughter works.
Oh, really?
Yeah. She's smart. Okay, let's see. He's an accountant. Okay. I'm looking at your, I am being nice. I'm looking at your, oh, these are the boards that you prefer. Northrop-Air Library District Board. Have you ever served on that board?
No, sir.
Okay. What boards have you served on?
This would be my first.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry. Now he's got a defense. Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Members Stokel?
I just want to say thank you for applying, and it always makes me very happy and excited when we have people that do just move here and wanting to get involved. I've been approached by several people that haven't been here for a year, which you have to be here for at least a year to serve on a board. So I'm glad you hit that mark, and just want to say thank you for getting involved.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I also thank you, sir. And you can be seated, and we'll see what happens.
All right, thank you.
Okay, what's your pleasure, counsel?
Move to appoint Mr. Jim Green to the Historic Preservation Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Petitions and requests from the public?
Good evening. Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm speaking to you tonight as a professional engineer, and we have another professional engineer, Mr. Sean Stauffer, who is intimately involved in the subject of the drainage relief west of I-95. So I'm here tonight in response to a comment from Mayor, the mayor, on May 14th, 2019, after I spoke, said that at that time you were saying that there is maintenance of the drainage relief. And I'm not sure if you understand what I'm talking about. It's the drainage relief west of I-95, which is outside of city limits, and it is not maintained. And it's evident in at least three ways. And one is that I have reported to it and signed and sealed reports that it's not maintained. And if you can go along I-95, you'll see that it's not maintained. As far as maintained, because it's like a wall, wall of overgrown vegetation, except for there's an area that looks like some kind of, like a salt flat or something that has some, has a, so it's not maintained there. And you can also, it's clearly visible if you look at the Google Maps or other sources, such as the property appraisers, you can see the overgrowth in that area. Is that right, Mr. Jordan? This is supposed to be a public meeting. And if you're speaking with other people at the time...
You need to continue what you need to do.
Okay, are you listening?
He's speaking to the city manager, sir, and I'm another counsel.
Yeah, I know, but the thing is, is that, is that...
Sir, continue, please.
I think there's a question of...
Using your time, please you, please continue.
There is a question of whether this is within the bounds of, let's say, the sunshine law, when you're talking to somebody else at a public meeting, and I can't hear what you're saying.
No, sir, that's not the case.
It's not the case?
No.
In other words, council members can talk to council members?
If you will listen a moment.
Okay.
If he spoke to another council member, he was not speaking to a council member. He was speaking to the city manager.
Okay, all right. So, okay, all right. So this drainage relief is required, and it's required by reason, logic, common sense, city stormwater master plan, flood protection, increased drowning hazards, the design of I-95, I'm talking about this drainage relief, these stormwater permits, city's freshwater managed study, numerous firm maps for over six square miles of property within city limits, which I've talked to you about at the CRA meeting. So I believe that the council should do this, not believe, but the council should provide this drainage relief, because it is a, without doing it, it's a danger to the health, safety, welfare of the public. May I have extra time? Couple minutes?
I see nobody. But I have a question for you. You said it's outside of the city limits. Why are you here?
The stormwater master plan for the city of Titusville includes outside of the city limits. And so does this.
That's the answer. That's the answer. That's all.
Well, and also...
Thank you, sir.
FEMA maps too, firm maps.
Anyone else wish to speak on the petitions and requests? I see none others. Consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir. Counsel, does any council member want to pull one of the three items? We have no cards, so with your permission, sir, I'll read for the record.
Yes, sir.
And this will require a roll call vote, because we have a resolution as the first one. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the maintenance memorandum agreement with Florida Department of Transportation for city to provide maintenance of a multi-use trail to be installed on State Road 406 leading from the Maxboro Crossway. Additionally, approve the mayor to execute the agreement and approve resolution 28, 2019. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of contract to Senate Tech LLC to furnish and install a new security surveillance camera and video monitoring system at the city's police department in the amount of $53,561.04, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the award of contract to Extreme Control Systems Inc. of Jupiter, Florida, in the amount of $38,630 to provide supervisory control and data acquisition, integration for new servers and software at the Osprey and Blue Heron Water Reclamation facilities, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Since nothing was pulled, we don't have any discussion. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Number nine, we have nothing under it. Number 10, first readings, we have none. Eleven, no business. New business. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 12A is water and sewer revenue refunding bond series 2020 in resolution. In 2010, the city authorized a water and sewer bond in the par amount of $40,385,000. Due to the changing market conditions, the city requested PFM Financial Advisors LLC to examine refunding opportunities that could lower the annual debt service. PFM recommended the city pursue a privately placed forward settlement direct bank loan, which is, in today's market conditions, is expected to be the efficient and cost-effective method of financing. Seven proposals from the following firms were received, Bank of America, Merrill Lynch, Capital One Public Financing Funding, Center State Bank, JP Morgan Chase, SunTrust, TD Bank, and Wells Fargo. Based on PFM's review and discussion with city staff, city attorney, and bond counsel, it was determined that JP Morgan Chase provided the best proposal. JP Morgan Chase proposed an indicative interest rate of 1.826% that can be locked up for, in up to 180 days following the execution of the rate lock agreement. Up until the date city council approves the rate lock agreement, the city will be exposed to changes in interest rates. Once the rate lock agreement is executed, the interest will be locked until the closing date in January 2020. The loan amount will not exceed 16 million in terms of approximately five years. The city will be subject to breakage fees if the loan does not close as scheduled, or the city desires to prepay the loan prior to the scheduled maturity date. It's estimated the city can achieve over a million dollars of net present value debt service savings, over $200,000 annually between 2020 and 2024. And we have staff here to fill you in. I believe the city attorney is going to walk you through what needs to be done after staff talks.
Staff, any comments?
So we have Jeremy Niedfeld here from PFM, our financial advisors. We wanted him just to give you a quick little summary of kind of the things, the interest rate, and kind of what the forward closing agreement and that stuff are.
Thank you again. Jeremy Niedfeld with PFM here on behalf of Jay Glover, who handles the day-to-day. He's potentially on the way to the hospital right now, having his first baby. So he has to be covered.
I think his wife is involved in this also. You get yourself in a lot of trouble, like, doing that kind of mistake.
He's taking all the credit at the office, though. So not to get too technical, but I know in the agenda item overview, you know, there was some preliminary data. The rate was locked this morning, subject to approval at tonight's meeting, and the entering into of a forward rate lock agreement, which is a little different to get savings on a transaction. Forward delivery agreements required because of a change in tax code that we don't need to go into. But part of the tax reform didn't allow for advance refundings any longer. So we're entering into a transaction that essentially locks in the interest rate until early January, when the city is within the 90-day current call window. So these are actually callable, the transaction being refundable, refunded is callable April 1st, 2020. So what we're doing tonight is getting permission and approval to move forward and sign the forward delivery agreement, which then locks the rate that was set this morning. You know, that rate was three basis points higher than what was in the proposal, so 1.856. And the savings from that rate is about 1.1 million, or 6.7% PV savings. And that results in $217,000 in savings in 2020, and a little over $240,000 per year in savings for the next four years. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions left.
Member Stokel?
I know, I know, yes. First off, whenever I hear us saving money, I'm always a fan of this. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I guess my question would be, I think this, since I've been on council, this is the first time that I've seen us do one of these. So I just wanted, and this may be more for you, Bridget, what is our process? Do we, every few years, put out a proposal to see if we can save on interest rates? Or what, where did this come from, for us to even decide to do this, I guess?
Well, honestly, it came from a call from Jay Glover at PFM. We've worked with them for years, and they kind of help us track our bonds and our financing, and they keep an eye on interest rates.
Okay.
And when they're favorable. And he approached Richard and I a month or so ago and said, you know, "You might want to take a look at this." And so we went through the process. PFM did the RFP for us. And then if the rates weren't favorable, we weren't going to do it. But they kind of help us a lot by kind of guiding us through a lot of these processes.
Thank you, PFM. We appreciate you, so.
Yes, go right ahead.
This is really short. Thank you, guys. This is really great. We have more money to spend.
But, remember Nelson, this is in the water department. Remember, it's the water. So it's helping, it's helping the water utility, so. Don't get too excited.
I was getting excited. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, be excited for the water utility.
Sean's smiling. So, yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. Member Jordan?
Just one question. How much is this costing us to do? The refinance?
That's a great question. So the, you know, there's two ways to look at it. There's the interest rate that was locked in, the 1.856%. Then there's an all-in true interest cost, which includes the cost of issuance, the cost of paying the professionals and the bank to do the transaction. That's a 2.01%. So approximately 16 basis points is one way to look at it. In total cost, it's $70,000. So on a six, just under $16 million... So on a six, just under $16 million transaction, it's $70,000 in issuance costs.
That makes a lot of sense to me. Thank you very much.
Sounds rather fair. Anyone else? I see, see nothing there. I think the city attorney takes it at this point.
Do you have any other comments from bond council members?
Do you have any?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, counsel, by adopting a motion to approve resolution number 29, 2019, you will be supplementing resolution number 5, 2010, as amended and supplemented of the city council seat Titusville, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $16 million in aggregate principal amount of your water and sewer system revenue refunding bond series 2020 for the purpose of refunding all of the city's water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds series 2010, pledging pledged funds to secure payment of the principal and interest on said bonds in the manner and to the extent provided in resolution 5, 2010, awarding the sale of the bond to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., on a forward delivery basis. You'll be approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of the rate lock letter agreement, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of the forward delivery bond purchase agreement, providing certain terms and details of such bond in the resolution. You'll be delegating certain authority to the mayor for the authorization, execution, and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement. You'll be delegating authority for the appointment of a verification agent if necessary. You will be appointing the escrow agent. You'll be making certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the issuance of these bonds. So there, so your motion, if you are inclined to make it, to approve resolution 29, 2010, 2019, will be making those authorizations I just stated.
You have a light? Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, I move to approve execution of the rate lock agreement and a new loan contract with JP Morgan Chase as the loan provider and approve resolution number 29-2019.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? See none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, before we go forward, I know our bond counsel, Rhonda Bond Collins, would like to address counsel.
Hi, it's Rhonda Bond Collins.
Hi.
Your light's not on.
Yeah, your light, your light, just press the bottom there.
There you go.
I thought I had a big enough mouth, but that's okay.
They can't hear you upstairs, no matter how.
The only thing I'd like to point out to you is that the transaction will close what we call a final closing in January, January 9, 2020. And the way we have revised the documents, it will be in a manner that we will not have to come back before you, that it will happen automatically, whatever document, certificates or anything else that will need to be executed at that time, we provide it for that authorization in the resolution that you, that you just approved. So it will be an automatic transaction on January 20, a month or so before we'll start sending out the final documents, the bond. I'll have to come before you to get some things executed, but it won't be any additional approvals needed as long as we stay consistent with what you approved tonight, which obviously we will because you are locking the rate.
So, that's the question. Everything's locked in already. There's no changes potentially. I see everybody in the background like this.
No, I think that you received some red lines of documents today and those are the final documents, so those will be executed tonight and delivered to the bank. And then, as I say, a month or so before January 9, we'll have our final closing certificates and all of those things, which will be completely consistent with what you've approved tonight. So there won't be any additional approvals necessary.
As, as you did not have the light on the time, would you repeat your name and your position and so forth?
It's Rhonda Bond Collins and I am a shareholder at Bryant Miller Olive and I am bond counsel to the city of Titusville on this transaction.
Thank you, Mrs. Bond, for the counsel. I love it. I can't get over that one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other lights, so we need to do a vote on this. No, we already did that. Okay. So we're good. Petitions and requests from the public present at this point? Is there anybody that would like to speak? I don't see anyone. Okay. Mayor and council reports. On my report, I did see that there was two, there were two errors. I was out of state on the Durango's ribbon cutting. The vice mayor was kind enough to take care of it for us and represent the city. I thank you, sir. And the other one was unfortunately because I was unable to, I was unable to attend the fire department pinning of Jeremy, I don't know what his last name is. I'm sorry, on July 2nd, so I wasn't at that particular meeting either. Other than that, everything was correct. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel, sir?
Counsel reports?
I'm sorry? Oh, yes, right, counsel. Any reports?
I just have a word as the city liaison to the Parks and Rec, North Pavar Parks and Rec Board. I would like to note that Werner Clay, Pastor Werner Clay is retiring and is actually, he may have already, but he is moving out of the area and will no longer be on the board. That does two things. One, we need to, and I'm sure city manager's on that, we need to get a city representative replacement because he was one of ours. He also, at some, many years, has been the chair. I guess I would also like to propose, city manager and mayor, that we get some sort of letter of appreciation and I'm sure we do that already. I'm just simply stating that having worked with him for the last nearly four years and him being the chair for most of that time, he is quite a mover and shaker and gets things done and extremely positive and I'm just blessed when I get to speak to him. So I would just give that information and make that proposal.
City manager?
Absolutely.
Take care of that. And I also want to say, I had the good fortune of working with him when I was appointed to that board and it was probably a little bit longer than you, you were on it. And Reverend Clay is just a wonderful man, as you pointed out. He's so, he's so gentle, he speaks and gets his point across without any abrasiveness and that's hard to come by in this world today. We could all take a lesson from that. So with that, you'll take care of the letters and we'll do that. I, Member Nelson?
I was just going to add, I got a call last week from Jeff Davis from Parks and Rec and they are talking about planning on redoing Blanton Park, which is over on Park Avenue and Blanton Avenue and is sorely needed. They have offered to make room for the officers or make a spot there for the officers to write their reports, which might clean up that particular area. I will tell you, a couple weeks ago, three of the officers, three, four of the officers showed up in a patrol car and that whole, all, all the problems disappeared. So that would be, that would be great for that neighborhood.
Great. Wonderful. Anyone else have a report they'd like to make? I see none. With that, now city manager's report.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank counsel for funding the 4th of July event as well as the donations that came in and corporate sponsorships. I think it was a wonderful event. We've received multiple calls over the past few days about the shape of Sandpoint Park, all the renovations that have been done by Park and Recs to include paving, exercise equipment and other things. So it is our premier park and I think it was a great venue and a great show on 4th of July. I have no action items for you and I have just the special meetings and events list for you and a reminder tomorrow will be an executive session for discussion on labor unions, subject to your questions.
Any questions for the city manager? I see none. Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Yes, I'd just like to update counsel. As you may be aware, in, in May, our code enforcement department took and presented a short-term rental case to the code board for a violation of short-term rental ordinance. At that meeting, the code board failed to find the property owner in violation of the city's short-term rental ordinance. The city requested a rehearing this past Monday. The code board denied the request for rehearing on that item. I just wanted to give you that update, let you know if there's any interest by the council